Roll call for us.
Mary Benton.
Yes.
Albert Brown.
Here.
Uh, Gordon Fry.
Present.
Charles Jennings.
Present and accounted for.
Carl Mills.
Here.
Mike Munson.
Here.
Andy Patton.
Here.
Doctor Scott Rogers. Brian Love.
Okay. Item one, declaration. At this time, I'd like to ask the planning commission members to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so they might come to a fair decision. Any declarations? I see none. Moving on to number two, public comments. Persons who wish to address the planning commission, I see nobody here. I'm not gonna read the whole rest of that. Item three, consent agenda, meeting minutes. Everybody's got a copy of the, uh, minutes? Do I have, uh... Motion to accept in a second.
So move.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous consent. Old business, no items. Moving on to number four, new business. Hold a public hearing to consider amendments to the zoning regulations, Article twenty-three, telecommunications towers motion. To recommend approval, disapproval. Will the amendments to the zoning regulations, Article twenty-three, telecommunication towers, to the city commission? We have a motion to open the public hearing.
So I'll move.
Thank you, second, thank you.
I move to close the public hearing.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Unanimous... Oh, I guess we have to do roll call on this one. I'll hand that back over to you.
Y'all don't want me to even discuss it?
We discussed it last time.
I don't think there was... That's fine.
I mean, that's a public hearing, we don't, that's a public part.
Yeah, we're just closing, we're just closing the public hearing here, so...
That's fine.
Unless somebody up here wants to get up and speak.
I guess our, well, our roll call vote would be to pass, well, pass it as we, as presented, that's why I said that, right?
Okay, so we've closed it now. You can do your little spiel.
Okay.
If you feel you must.
Sure.
You're gonna get there in time for Cal Stents.
I know.
Another reason I said that, just, just wanna, real quick, um, of course, this is because of the changes state law. Uh, it's the only reason we're even really even approaching this. Uh, the big thing that is the problem is we cannot require towers to have co-location and we cannot require them to supply it, so they, they don't have to do the study to prove that that's, they have to build a tower. And they don't have to make it able to, um, support it. The other thing that probably I should mention is, can't anything in there that talks about the negative impacts of the environment or surroundings, we can't have any language like that. Uh, the argument in the statute is that those kind of things are perceived or alleged. So we can't, and we couldn't do a condition of use permit, uh, we couldn't deny one based on those kind of factors either, basically is what it comes down to. Uh, beyond that, we removed a section, um, about transfer permits, like we require to be notified. I did some research to see the two towers that we have here in our city, and that was actually harder than I thought it would maybe. Uh, I did come up with the three of the, what I thought was, should've been four towers. Uh, the one over here, the one, there's two on F Street, but I only got, I only got one for that. And then KSOK is the other, only other tower that we have since the city limits. And yes, KSOK does, that does count. And remember, this is not cell towers, this article covers telecommunication towers. Anything remotely related to telecommunications, if it's a tower, would fall under this. Other than that, we talked about pretty much all the other little things. There's, the version you got before you has a number of grammatical changes. Um, to, just, just to let you know that's in there. Uh, Howard pointed out that I have at least one area where I didn't renumber a list. So, that's, that's been fixed. I think that was on page two, twenty-three-two. And those, everything else is pretty much more grammatical changes. If you want me to go into any more detail, I can, but I think we understand it just a little bit, it's happened.
As long as we abide by the law, that's all that matters, right?
And that's, that's the key. We could not change anything, but that leaves me in a bind because, um, it's difficult to remember what's allowed. It's not allowed, so I'd just prefer to change it to keep it compliant fully.
I move to recommend the approval of the amendments to the zoning regulations, Article twenty-three, telecommunications towers, to the city commission.
City.
Thank you. And a roll call.
Uh, Mary.
Any discussion, wait, I'm sorry, any discussion on this, uh, item? What do you have? Discussion?
No.
Oh, okay. Ain't no discussion, we'll move to the roll call vote.
Mary Benton.
Yes.
Albert Brown.
Yes.
Gordon Fry.
Yes.
Charles Jennings.
Yes.
Uh, Carl Mills.
Yes.
Mike Munson.
Yes.
Andrew Patton.
Yes.
Scott Rogers. And Brian. I only have the last names on here, so I had to think about twenty-three.
Alright, item five, discussion of changes to neighborhood revitalization plan. Hand that back over to you.
Okay. I don't know how familiar you all are with the neighborhood revitalization plan. I'll call it NRP from here on out, because that's too, that's a mouthful. It has been in effect in various forms all the way back to two thousand. It's authorized by the Kansas Neighborhood Vitalization Act. I had to say it again. The original plan started out as a few small districts, um, uh, back in the two thousand two comprehensive plan in there, there, um, it was kinda recommended in that plan. That's where those, uh, some of the more recent districts came from. In two thousand four, a shift was made. Um, instead of having just this nice old compact district, we expanded it to include virtually everything south of Radio Lane was, was in it. There was a few exceptions in there, especially the, uh, the commercial board car along Summit Street, down to Kansas River shuttle. In two thousand six, we added even more, um, to pretty much comprise all housing in the city limits, almost completely. At that time, the plan offered a seventy-five percent rebate on any improvements that were made for seven years. Um, the key about this program too, you may be aware of it or not, but it's a rebate, not an abatement. So you pay your taxes and then you get a refund of the taxes back. I know, Carl, you've done this program. I don't know if anybody else has, but I remember you were.
How many people have been in this, do you know?
I don't have a number offhand, but there's been a good number of applications. I did, I have a number, I just don't have it with me. But I'd say several hundred at least since the two thousand six. It's, it's not used a ton, but it is used, it is active. It is a program that is used all the time. Well, kinda moving on from there, in two thousand eight, um, Mr. Rowland at the time thought that it would be appropriate to kind of expand the length of the program and also the percentage. So we went from seventy-five for seven to, um, ninety for ten years, except on commercial, it was stated to seventy-five for seven. And then the historic district, I guess it didn't say that before, it's always been ninety-five percent for ten years as well. This program, if we did nothing to, if the city commission does nothing else but that way, before the end of the year, it would actually completely expire. It was set up to renew every four years, and so I was on track to just have it renewed again. And, uh, somebody asked me to kinda look at it, and I kind of agree. Um, I've, we've had a number of applicants, um, for areas that maybe don't need revitalization. It's become more of an economic development incentive, which isn't always a bad thing, um, 'cause we certainly need more housing in this community. Um, but looking back at where the act reads, I feel it's more appropriate to focus on revitalization of, of our older neighborhoods that are struggling to, to hold their value. There's, we've got swaths of town that have multiple, if, orange stickers on them, to be quite blunt. Um, the more of those you see, the more decline, that's a really easy way to measure a neighborhood's decline. Um, so what I did was I looked at a study that the county did in two thousand fourteen. They identified, um, and that map is towards the end of your packet. They identified a couple, it looks like this. They identified several areas around town that they called housing rehabilitation areas. So what I did was I kinda looked at that, I read through the study before I did anything, to try to figure out how they determined them. And I kinda like their boundaries. I, I think that they kind of show a pretty good idea. What I did is I went through those boundaries and expanded a few here and there, um, where I thought appropriate. And also, these are just kinda lines drawn on a map. I actually tried to find some property boundaries. Mine are a little bit different. So if you look at my map, you see several areas. And first, this is just my, oh boy, it's, we can go anywhere with this. Um, the, the area up off of Kansas, Oklahoma, Colorado. Gordon lives in the neighborhood. That neighborhood has seen some decline, not saying Gordon's house is wrong.
Beautiful home out there.
Yeah, but we've got, uh, some houses down on the west end of Oklahoma that.
That have seen some. That's, that's kinda where that one came from. Um, then, kinda moving on south to the one I color code in blue, um, from Birch down to Chestnut and from Eighth to Sixth is what it was identified in the housing study. There's some interesting areas in there that have been defined. There's a lot of, again, there's a lot of housing that's still good in that neighborhood. Um, but the idea is we wanna keep the neighborhood from further declining. Seventh Street, in that section, there's a lot of problems. Um, we felt that, staff felt that Sixth Street may not be quite far enough east. So moved it over to Fourth and, and, so... Then on the east of there, that neighborhood, uh, from B to the right of our tracks, there's, there's a lot of problems in there, pretty much the entire lane. You could probably go farther north and, oh, what street is that? I think it was Pine. But that's where it, the study cut it off, so that's kinda where I stopped. And then, then there's kinda the neighborhood that's just kinda off over in this direction here. Um, just kind of an older neighborhood, there's a lot of houses that have been torn down over the years. There's just not very many houses over there. So it'd be kinda nice to encourage some development over there, um, coast of the levee. Now that the levee's there, it's not in the floodplain anymore. Um, and then kinda on the south end of town, there's several districts there that doesn't really make any difference where you, how you draw the lines, how the districts should lie. Um, but a lot of that area was in the floodplain up until the new levees were built. And so there was a lot of decline before the levees were built. And of course, it's not seeing much revitalization since then. Uh, people tend to just do whatever they want to keep their house livable. There's a lot of homes in the area that's kinda south of Madison, west of Summit, that are sub twenty thousand dollar homes. And so, that's not necessarily bad. Houses are just, they're all small and they're mixed in with some, some rough stuff. So that, that one in particular is an area that, that we would definitely wanna focus on. And then there's the Enterprise Edition, a kind of across Summit. It's a little bit better neighborhood, but it's, it's kinda the same scenario. And then I think we'd almost be remiss without doing Sleep Edition. Uh, and that's various reasons there. There's been a lot of houses that have been torn down even since I've been here, so a lot of open lots. Um, with the ball field disappearing down there, now there's a big hole in the neighborhood, we gotta figure out what to do with that. Um, the city may be interested in doing something with that, depending on what we do with the wastewater plant. But the wastewater plant's part of the problem, probably down there too. That's slated for some upgrades here in the next few years. The state will, and the EPA will make us do some stuff there. So some, maybe the, can't guarantee the smell won't be there, but that may be some stuff that'll, that we work on too. But I've, I've really liked that neighborhood. A lot of people tend to look disdain when they think of sleuth vision. But if you go down there and meet some of the people, they're, they just, just wanna be left alone. They're kinda like how they're, kind of an isolated thing. But being isolated also means that we don't see it very often, and so not a lot of investment is made in a neighborhood like that. At any rate, the idea was to kinda collapse the districts a little bit, focus on the housing areas that we really need to focus on, keeping from going even further down the drain. There's, I don't know if you're familiar with it, there's several other housing initiatives that the city's also working on. Um, including some partnerships with, uh, Creekstone and several other industries in town. Um, where the city may have to tear down a house because it's in a dangerous condition. And, uh, so Creekstone and these other entities buy it up and put into housing, because they need more housing for their, um, expansion. That kind of program, we've kinda talked back and forth, the staff, whether or not they'd be eligible for the neighborhood revitalization program. But I think ultimately the proposal would allow them to do that because they're not receiving any kind of other incentive. There is an incentive out there, or there is a, not incentive, there's some language in the plan, and there is actually some in the current plan too, that if you're getting other assistance like industrial revenue bonds or some other tax abatement program, you couldn't do a program like the neighborhood revitalization. Can't have too many, can't have zero percent tax revenue, that doesn't really help us. So we wanna still have, that's why we kept it ninety percent, so it's hard to. I looked at several other cities to see about adjusting the percentages, and they're, they're all a little place. Um, and the, the length of the program, they're a little place. So I think our ten years is working, and I haven't heard any complaints from the county or the other entities like the school district, the college. I guess the county's the only other one. Now, they would have to agree to any changes in this plan before it could ever be enacted. The reason I brought it to you is it's a housing program. And I felt that it was necessary for the planning commission as part of the comprehensive plan. Um, so it's kinda necessary for you guys to have a little input on something like this before it goes to the city commission. We don't hold, I haven't heard otherwise, but my understanding is the city commission actually holds the public hearing to adopt this plan. So unless you have some major concerns about it, this would probably be about the only time you would get input on the plan.
Well, eventually it's gonna broaden the tax base.
The idea of the program, and I think it works, um, because, um, when it was used as an economic incentive, that's how Forest Glen really happened. Uh, if it wouldn't have been for that program, it, it wouldn't be there.
So Forest Glen, I don't see on this map though, or as, as an area.
Right.
Is that not, so that, that's not the intent?
At this point, I would not consider that an area that needs revitalization.
Well, but for new housing and things like that?
For new, now, that's another argument, um, whether or not we would want to do citywide for the sake of brand new housing.
That's what we're doing right now, though.
Essentially, that is what we're doing today.
That's what I'd wanna see going forward.
Well, if I.
Going forward?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just continue with what we have.
Mister Chair Pro Tim, if I might, it's actually kinda providential, 'cause I actually sat here as mayor and brought this program to our Kansas City. And, and I came back here as a private citizen and almost cried when they, uh, moved to expand it citywide. Because the intent of revitalization is, is what you're saying, it is to ultimately increase valuation by going into neighborhoods. Uh, though, and you are almost back to the initial neighborhoods that we identified.
Right, they may, may have shifted a little bit, but yeah, I looked at that plan too.
Forest Glen actually was a, a separate economic development initiative apart from neighborhood revitalization. They just kinda happened to have, come around at the same time. But the idea is just what you did, uh, is to drive around and look at places, uh, uh, where you're seeing the two things. They're, 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 uh, dilapidated properties that are still considered habitable, people living in them. Uh, but they're, they are, they're outdated, uh, they're small, they're shotgun houses. The property values on them are extremely low. They are the twenty thousand, maybe thirty thousand dollar properties. You got a whole neighborhood of them. The one area here that is the, the aqua color, uh, was seventy, when we went through that, was seventy percent, uh, uh, rental property, uh, the only, and there were, uh, there were owners, vacated owner properties. And there hadn't been new construction in that neighborhood for over thirty years, going back to, uh, two thousand when we adopted the program. And the intent is to make it attractive for builders to go into those areas and replace twenty thousand dollar structures with what we called at the time affordable housing, which might be seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, sixty, a hundred thousand.
Ideally, it would raise the neighborhood.
Yeah, and ultimately, you say, you come in, we give you a rebate on the taxes, and then after ten years, all of a sudden, all of this, we get the valuation immediately, but then you get the tax revenue ten years later. You know, that's construction. If it would've, if it would've happened without the program, it would've happened from nineteen seventy to two thousand. Nobody put money in those because you, who builds a hundred thousand dollar house behind, beside two twenty thousand dollar houses and a vacated property?
Unfortunately, new houses, unless you really scope it down, that's costly.
So the whole idea was to take those blighted properties off the, off the map and replace them with some attractive housing in those neighborhoods to bring the valuation in those neighborhoods and property values in general. Uh, so that, that's it, and, and I, I, I'm sorry, that was just my, I told you so. I told them it wouldn't work when you went citywide. You would get people use it to, you know, put a new roof on their hundred eighty thousand dollar home, and nobody would take any of these twenty thousand dollar properties off the list.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, were you raising your hand? Was that?
I was, yeah, had a question for you.
Go, go ahead.
Uh, on these new areas you marked, have you checked, are we getting any applications out of those areas?
I did, I, um, I got a list of all the properties from the county, that was the easiest way for me to get it. And I went through and marked where all those properties were, and to be honest, it's scattered pretty well.
Okay.
As far as the usage of the program, it, it's, it's all over the city.
Well, in the old comp plan, it identified the housing basically as nineteen forties and fifties. And we haven't had any big, real big growth since then. And some, some incentive to get people to, to do something, I think we need to.
Well, where all those, where all those new duplexes are up there, none of those would've gone in without that program.
Yeah, and that's great.
Yes.
Uh, you know, I, 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 I agree with, with, uh, Mike here. It, it, you know, the, the need for new housing starts is so important, uh, that I, I just have trouble limiting it to just the revitalization of old areas. I understand, uh, uh, Charles' point there, and I, I think we need to focus on that as well. We need to leave this program or maybe another program that could help with that.
Well, actually, I, I think you don't, you, you're thinking, I'm talking about rehabbing properties. Start about taking those, those dilapidated properties out and doing new housing in there.
Knocking down, building something new, yeah.
So you don't, you know, it, you know, it's, it's natural to, we wanna build a house in a, in a neighborhood where everybody's building new houses.
Right.
And so it's an attractive thing for there, but as far as what these guys look at and what the city manager and city commission looks at in terms of valuation and what that does for their tax base and their annual budget, it still hurts when you have properties that are going from forty thousand to twenty thousand dollars in the twenty-first century. And when they're having to do what they're doing now, which is tag them and spend their money to tear them down. And then they, uh, assess the property and nobody shows up to own it, and so they just have eaten that cost, you know? And some of those have gone to like, have been deeded over to Habitat for Humanity, built some nice homes there, you know, but they build one a year. They build one a year.
Right.
So that would take about eighty-seven years for us to make a significant improvement on the valuation. And by the time that's, all the new housing will be out, you know, so, so, so the objective was to give somebody like Eck, uh, uh, an incentive to come in, acquire property, build spec homes, you know, kinda plot out a new neighborhood. And all of a sudden, you got, you know, twenty, you know, homes valued at about a hundred grand where you had two homes before. So you're trying to, you're trying to repopulate those areas that are kind of the burden on the tax base. And, and, and so it is, it is new housing, it's just trying to do it in places where there has been nothing for forty or fifty years now.
Can I kinda add something to? I think it's Windfield. In their program, they have relatively compact districts like we do. But I believe they also have, uh, the ability to do single-family housing anywhere. What it is, what the difference is there, the rebate's not ninety percent, it's sixty percent, and it's five years instead of ten. That may be a way to kind of appease what.
That's exactly what I was gonna suggest, is a, you know, a, a, you know, a slower or lower scale
Yeah.
of fewer years and lower percentage for new, new housing outside of these districts.
Outside of the districts makes sense. That makes sense.
That's a, I think that's a pretty good plan. I, I like that.
Josh, is that CDBG grant still in force?
The home program?
It's a home improvement program.
Yeah, it, it isn't because the, um, I mean, it still exists at the federal level. The state has chosen not to participate in it the last several cycles, uh, due to lack of funding.
Okay.
However, it's still there, and I believe I saw something recently where they're probably going to try to start it again.
You know, that, when, when I was in Parsons, they were looking for about a half a million dollars a year to help people, and those were grants.
And we were getting something similar to that for, we did several cycles worth of that. It helped, the last one, I think, did six houses, six rehabs. And we had some in the past cycles that had done, it was a little bit more numbers, like, so that helped the, uh, homeowners that knew they needed to do work but had no idea how they're gonna pay work. And it did a kind of what they call a soft mortgage, where they had to live in the house for three years, I think it was. Once you lived in there three years after completion, then you could go ahead and sell it, that, that mortgage would go away. But otherwise, you're gonna have to pay back part of the money, which is kind of an incentive to keep people in their homes for a while, not just mix it up so they can sell it, take advantage of it.
Well, I think I agree with, with, uh, Andy and then, if we did seven years and seventy-five percent for any improvements or new construction anywhere in the city limits, I'd like to see that in there, just to still encourage, still encourage some of that.
Yeah.
Now, we're seeing outside of these, outside of these target areas?
Within, anywhere in the city limits, outside of the target area, still do seven years, seventy-five percent versus the ten-year, ninety percent.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, no, that's good.
Yeah.
That's good.
I, I'm not gonna disagree, I just wanna break it up a couple of points. Where I'm living now, bought that, uh, s- seven years ago, and the house was, we just had to gut it. It hits on South Centennial, uh, you know, decent road. But that house, they couldn't sell it unless it was a private sale, I mean, they couldn't get it appraised, you know? And so we spent a lot of money on that thing, I mean. And then, and then my wife was sick and she wanted something doing, we bought a foreclosure up on Highland Drive. And the ne- two neighbors was thinking about buying it and tearing it down. Well, we bought it and spent a hundred and fifty thousand and just made thirty-four thousand dollars. We didn't really do it to make money, but it was, you know, it's a good neighborhood, so there, there is some things that don't follow, you know, exactly, but, you know.
I, I'd, I think that's a, that's an excellent enhancement to what we have in front of us, as you guys are saying to, to spread.
I really am. I encourage them, I'm like that, I appreciate them.
Yeah.
And I think that's a good point. Um, we could still do that without giving away the horse or, whatever the expression is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Give away the farm.
The farm, the farm.
I have a question. If an individual came and, and applied for this, would his, if anyone to do it himself, would his wages, time be compensated?
No, the, the only, what, how this works is only based on the improved value. So ideally, as you say, you had a hundred thousand dollar home, you did ten thousand dollars worth of improvements to it, and your value. and your value went up ten thousand dollars, which obviously doesn't happen, but as an example. Then you would get the rebate based on that ten thousand dollars. So the labor.
It has to be a professional then.
No, but it's based on the permit value. And there's, so yeah, labor, I guess to a certain extent is included in it. But ultimately, it's about how it appraises.
That's what the county values that when you start and what the value that it, after it's finished.
And that's the part that you're, but rebate.
But that would, that would include his wages, say, like he, if he rebuilt the foundation himself. But that's not, that's not really gonna increase the value.
Only if that would increase the value.
Yeah, that's.
I found during my research that it's like fifty percent.
You could put a hundred, you could put a hundred thousand dollars in fixing it up, and it only increases the value by fifty. So at least you don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, just trying to make sure your taxes don't go up very much for doing anything, if, if.
At least not right away.
Yeah.
And the idea of the program is, hopefully, you were gonna do this project anyways. This just kind of kicks it into gear, oh, well, now I have a reason to go ahead and do it. Maybe it's easier to even get financing because I have, hopefully, one of my payments for the financing a year is being paid for. I think that's kind of a shoot for it.
Just one more quick question. Do you, if somebody would come up and wanted to apply for this, do you run them through? Do you help them with their application and their questions and stuff?
And actually, Therese, our administrative assistant up there, is a pro at this even more so than I, really. And she'll, she'll help walk through whether or not it's actually eligible, the project you're working on. Stuff like maintenance, for instance, like a new roof or something like that, doesn't really qualify. There was a list of other things.
But that shouldn't raise your taxes anyway.
Right.
I mean, you're of tax value, so.
So, I mean, it is more to encourage you to fix up your house, not do it to maintain it.
It's square foot, it's square foot, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you should be putting your roof on your house.
The way appraisers are.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Add a room, add a garage.
Add a pool.
Add a pool, yeah, and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that added to the seven years, seventy-five for anything else, commercial or.
Yeah, outside of the.
In addition to the.
That's a good, that's a good deal.
The extra incentive to do it in a blighted area.
Just the extra little kick to get her started.
I will definitely add that to the proposal. I don't know when we're gonna do this exactly, I gotta do it pretty quick.
Yeah.
The way the program is designed is, like I said earlier. It's set to expire on December thirty-first, but it could be renewed for four more years. After four more years, the program has to expire because the interlocal agreements with the other tax entities expire. So we'd have to start from scratch anyways. So either we change it to match this right now and set a new horizon, do a new interlocal agreement, or we wait for four more years and start from scratch again.
If we do that, that's not really having to do much to change the interlocal agreement, because we're actually renewing it less than what we had before, and we have to renew it with them anyway because of these big ones.
This should be, yeah, that's a good point. It might, this might be the time to try to redo those interlocals.
Try to shoot for the same deadline. Either way, I mean, actually, we don't have to do anything for them at the end of this year. All we have to do is pass the resolution. That's, that's not really that big of a deal for us, but I just felt it was time to at least look at it, to see if there's any changes. And it sounds to me like you guys are kind of interested in doing some modifications to what the current plan is. I don't know what the city commission, I haven't talked to them, so I don't know what their opinions are on our current program versus new proposals, including what we talked about tonight, the addition of that. And so I'm just saying, we'll see where this goes. I, I anticipate that they'll like the plan the way we drafted it, including my drafts and what we talked about tonight, so.
Do we need action?
No, no action on this. This was just a discussion.
However, if you want to give them a formal recommendation.
Mister Chair Pro Tim, I would move that we would forward this as a formal recommendation or endorsement to whatever is more appropriate, Mister White, to the city council.
Yeah.
Second.
Thank you. All is a favor?
Oh.
Hi.
And that's inclu- I'm sorry, that's inclusive of, of these comments about the seventy-five percent also.
All word of the motion, and it's just so.
Service.
Thank you.
Okay.
I could do that, sure.
Oh, yeah. I thought that was understood.
Yeah. I was understanding that, but you just clarified it.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take that.
Okay. Moving on to, there are no other items, so the next is adjournment. I have motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Thank you, all is a favor.
Hi.
Hi.
All right.